Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, April fifteenth, six P.M. in the council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you. Council President Mandelbaum.
Present.
Council Pro Tem, thanks.
Present.
Council Member Brightwell.
Here.
Council Member Cruz.
Present.
Council Member Haines.
Hi.
Council Member Hicks.
Present.
Council Member Hoag.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first up are their appointments.
Good evening, Council. I have three reappointments this evening. I know two of the reappointees are in the House. I'd like to ask Janie Fulton and Linda Wood to come forward. I don't believe Cory Moffett is here. So as you can see from your agenda, I know, all of you know these two distinguished, actually, former colleagues, residents, been here a long time, contributed a great deal to the city of Southfield. So I'm asking tonight for your approval to reappoint Janie Fulton to the Local Officers' Compensation Commission, to appoint Dr. Linda Wood, reappoint Dr. Linda Wood to the Art Commission, and Cory Moffett to the Historic District Committee.
Mr. President.
Or Commission, rather.
Yes. I'd like to move that we approve the reappointments of Cory Moffett, I'm sorry, to the Historic District Commission, Jamie Fulton to the Local Officers' Compensation Commission, and Dr. Linda Wood to the Public Arts Commission.
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Haines, to reappoint the three individuals as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. And Clerk Jackson will administer the oath of office. And I'll get out of the way.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the City Charter of the City of Southfield, and that I will faithfully perform the duties for Ms. Fulton, the Local Officers' Compensation Board, and for Ms. Wood, the Public Arts Commission, according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Can I say your name, please, Kim?
Janie Fulton.
Could you sign?
Thank you.
Ms. Wood, could you sign?
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for your service.
Thank you.
The Council would like to thank you for your service, so please make it loud.
Thank you.
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 We do fist, fist bumps, right?
We're good.
Thank you so much.
We are now to the communication portion of our meeting. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedures for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The city council may not provide responses to public comment during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future. Each speaker will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Kevin Bond.
Been reffing. First thing I want to say is greetings to everyone, and then the second thing I want to say is thank you. You guys are really, at least I can say at least four of you guys have reached out personally to me, and I've been coming here, like I said, a while, and it feels good to know that the city officials here are at least listening to the citizens. Even though I might not get the outcome that I want, it still makes me feel good that I'm able to come up here and express myself, and then when I see you guys reach out and say, hey, here's a solution to this, I really appreciate that. So that's basically what I wanted to tell you guys, and I don't have any kind of problems with the government here, it's just that, I think it's, like I said, I'm a referee, so it's sort of like a gray area, and in baseball, it's like when the runner and the first baseman hits the bag at the same time, the umpire usually says, safe, they give the tie to the runner, and, I mean, the hitter. And so I'm just saying that if it's a gray area, we can err on the side of the citizens. But thank you, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stacy Jackson.
Good evening. Stacy Jackson, Southfield resident. Before I begin, I would like to say to the clerk, if I may, it's very good to see you I did want to speak tonight in regards to Ordinance fourteen thirty-three and Ordinance fifteen seventy-one relative to the septic and sewer line systems that, as this body knows, I've been coming to council since 2016 about this matter. The following year thereafter, this collective body agreed that it would do its best to find out group pricing, possible grants to help homeowners with these exorbitant prices. From that day to this one, our community has not yet received any feedback from the city relative to grant funding. It's also noticeable that, as residents have to make that decision to connect, that more and more residents are coming to find out that the pipes are not even listed or located where blueprints say they are, adding to the cost for many residents. I'm also concerned about the number of nonprofits and for-profits that many of our city officials have been implicated in, in a housing with predatory property tax foreclosure. We know that there were lawsuits that sided on the error of the residents and the homeowners, both in the appellate courts and the Michigan Supreme Courts, and we know that not more than a year ago, the U.S. Supreme Court also sided with residents in that matter. I would like to ask this council, what specifically are you doing as it relates to potential disbanding of these nonprofits and for-profit institutions in our city? And why hasn't there been any oversight to see that these residents are reached out to wherever they disbanded to after being foreclosed on, to reimburse them for their equity in their property? Since, the county has agreed to take on that expense to the tune of thirty-seven million dollars. I am a true believer that not everything we face can be changed, but absolutely nothing can be changed until it is faced. I am still looking for this council to rise to the occasion to face and tackle those tough issues. Tackling these does not include or imply that anyone is a bigot or racist. It's when we deflect, defend, and deny listening is when we give that appearance of being such.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Harris.
Keith Harris, and I'd like to say, I'm so glad to see you back, Janet. Mr. Hicks, I've already told quite a few people that you made sure that we are getting new security cameras in our Southfield Public Schools, and I've talked to somebody in the Southfield Public Schools, they're starting to wire them now, after that incident with Dr. Wendy Webster-Jackson at the schools, what she did. The only reason she got off that, didn't face any charges because the film was so bad. But I've been showing that film around the state of Michigan, and my goal is to make sure that Dr. Wendy Webster-Jackson never hold a public seat in the state of Michigan, in the county, in Oakland County, or in Southfield. I don't think she's fit for public office, and she's not fit to sit in a public restroom. The bottom line of it is, I thank you for hearing the people. We need that. Our kids need that. My other thing is, as my wife said, these septic tank issues are crazy. I go around and film these installments. There is no riser pipes. Those risers should have been in to save the people money, and to keep people from dewatering. Now, I think these five oh one C threes have set us up for failure in this city, but help is on the way. I'm asking for you guys to take a dive into these five oh one C threes. Pull them up for yourself and look at the names on these five oh one C threes, because we're coming after everybody. Nobody will be left behind. These things will be discontinued. These five oh one C threes got the money to reimburse the county for the thirty-seven million dollars. The taxpayers of Oakland County should not have to pay the debt of the crooks of Southfield. They should not have to pay that debt. And we are right this very moment, this is a bipartisan movement between the Democrats and the Republicans, to make sure we go after these elected officials who put these scams together. We want the money to come directly from Northland, wherever these five oh one C threes got their investments at. We want them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Keeler.
Why is this going?
You have three minutes.
I just want to make sure. The city adopted a plan back in 2015 to eliminate slum lords, speculators, and rental home companies. The effect of losing seventeen homes in the community, one hundred thirty-six thousand dollars in property taxes, two hundred thirty-six thousand dollars in food, water, waste, shopping dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars in entertainment money that would be spent in Southfield, one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars on gas, liquor, car repairs, home repairs in the city of Southfield. This comes out to be six hundred thousand dollars per year, over ten years, six million dollars. Somehow you are able to spend this money on a slum lord, but you can't spend this type of money on the seniors. Southfield neighborhood speculators, developers, slum lords, and rental home companies, wouldn't this be Lawrence Tech? I came here in 2012, and we talked about the rental property homes in my street, and all the problems that they were causing, as far as us trying to get the police, the fire department, to come there and get them off the street. If we had to call for emergency service, we couldn't get emergency service. The first time we had homes broken into, the first time we ever had three homes that the troop, that all the police department had to come out there to check on, because they were selling weed and marijuana there. Now, if you don't want this in your neighborhood, why should I want this in my neighborhood? And why should I have this in my neighborhood? And the only person that brought it there was Lawrence Tech, because they were the renters. When is your next meeting with Lawrence Tech? You won't be having one with Southfield, will you? Out of twenty-six homes, Lawrence Tech has destroyed seventeen homes. That's over half of our community. You say you want to keep the city in looking into what you call your Southfield, or your looks, or whatever you have for the city. You got to keep your property up. You got to follow the program. Lawrence Tech ain't keeping the property up. The worst property in my neighborhood, when I moved there, was Lawrence Tech. So explain to me, how is the NRA helping? How did they fix? How did they do anything?
Your time is up.
And that's not the only damage they don't do. I will be back again to talk about the rest of the damage they have done to my neighborhood.
Our next speaker is Pamela Gerald.
Good evening, Council. Good evening to the mayor, to the city administrator, to city attorney, to clerk, and everybody that's in the chambers. You know, I've been around this city for forty-one years, and I thought that I have heard it all. I'm getting so sick and tired of all the negativity that is being brought to this podium. I'm getting tired of all the attacks on our city, our city officials, our mayor, our city administrator, our city attorney, and sometimes our police and fire. A community is only as strong as its public safety. And in saying that, what do we say about our elected officials? If the people vote for them, you have to give them an opportunity to come in and be a new council person, learn what they need to know, and this is why not doing pomp and circumstance, pomp and circumstance and grandstanding is not important, because you can't look good doing that when you don't know what you're talking about. The city of Southfield does not foreclose on homes. It is Oakland County. When Andy Meisner was the treasurer, none of these residents that get up here and talk about how the city of Southfield is stealing a home, went to an Oakland County Commissioners' meeting and talked about foreclosure of homes, because that's where it starts from. None of you reached out to your county commissioners at the time and talked about these issues. I'm getting sick and tired of the mayor being attacked, the city administrator being attacked, and this council being attacked when the city does not foreclose on homes. When a lot of those people was coming here talking, I wrote down every name, pulled it up on the BSNA, and a lot of those people, from the day they bought their house, they did not pay any taxes for three, four, and five years. And they allow you to go over, and once it goes to the county, the city can't get involved. As soon as these people got foreclosure notices, they came out here and griped with the city. You need to know who does what, and who to talk to before it gets to that point. We have assessment and border review meetings about your taxes. Where were these people? And why are they not benefiting from what the city has to offer? I'm getting sick and tired of all this negativity. All of you are complaining about what's happening in Southfield. I don't hear you saying nothing about Trump, ninety-one charges.
Thank you. The next items on our agenda are the consent agenda items. These items are considered routine, non-controversial, or have previously been discussed. Does any member of the council wish to have any items pulled for further discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we approve Consent Agenda Item A through H.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve Consent Agenda Item A, to authorize an agreement with Kimmy Horn Productions LLC to arrange the Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival at the Southfield Municipal Campus on August ninth and tenth of 2024. Item B, West Nile Virus Prevention Funding Assistance. Item C, Acceptance of a Grant Funding of the Keep Michigan Beautiful Grant. Item D, Authorization to Award a Bid for the Drainage Repairs at the Evergreen Hills Golf Course. Item E, Authorization to Purchase a Case Five Eighty SN Backhoe for Park Services. Item F, Crohn's and Colitis Foundation of Michigan Chapter Request for the Use of the Donald F. Furcasi Municipal Campus Front Lawn and Walkways for a Walk. Item G, Authorization to Award a Bid for Replacement of the Wooden Fencing at the Mary Thompson Farm. And Item H, the Capital Improvement Plan Resolution for Approval and Adoption. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Next, we move into our public hearings and site plan, and our first item is PSLU two four dash zero 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 one, a special use request by Drifter Vans LLC to add a Class A dealership license to sell a custom camper vans at two four one seven five Telegraph Road.
Thank you, Council President. As you know, this is a special land use request in an industrial district for Drifter Vans. They are a customizing camper van company here in Southfield. I didn't know this last time, but I found out since, they actually came out of Centropolis. They were actually part of our incubator here. They want to add the dealership portion so that they can actually acquire the vehicles for their customers directly, instead of having the customers have to acquire the vehicles, and then drop them off to them and help them with financing. Their hours of operation, they have one shift per day, Monday through Friday, seven a.m. to six p.m., Saturday, Sunday, seven to five. They currently have eleven employees and are looking in the, not in the nearest future to get to twelve to thirteen. They'd have to substandard, go to substantially larger facilities to add more staff. Current zoning is I-1 industrial with a strip of P parking in the rear. Future land use is Southfield Technology Quarter. Those are consistent. Site aerial, you can see the three buildings that make up this site, it's three parcels, but they're all under common ownership and share access through the middle. There are access easements reciprocal on those properties. Mr. Straight, who's the owner, has been at the previous meetings, but is out of town today, but Mr. Lucine from the Drifter Vans is here. Existing conditions, this is showing the aisle down the middle to the rear building where Drifter is located. Side of the building, overhead doors, parking. Site plan, there's an administrative site plan, because there's some modest changes occurring on the site. They need to have a gate to secure the area where the new vehicles are being stored as part of their Class A dealership. That'll have to meet the fire department's requirements for knock boxes or lock boxes to get back there, and I think they're also going to get a small inning on the front of one of the front buildings. But that's not before you today, this is just the special land use. Floor plan of the building, you can see they occupy sort of the L, kind of wrapping around the, would be the east side and the north side of the building, then there's a couple of other tenants in that building as well. And then the petitioner is here, he does have a couple of slides, I'll pass him the clicker here.
If you can give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kim Lucine. I'm the manager of Drifter Vans, and we're located at two four one seven five Telegraph Road, Suite one hundred in Southfield. We are currently requesting for the special use permit to be able to get the vans directly from Ford. To get the vans directly from Ford, so we're asking for a dealership license. We're not able to do it right now, because we don't have enough. We don't produce enough vans to get the dealership from Ford, but that will be the case in the next few months. It will not change our business model or the amount of vans on the parking lot, it's the same thing. The only difference will be that Ford will provide the vans that are on the parking lot, waiting for us to put them inside the shop, instead of having the customer purchase the van and bring it inside the shop. So that will not change anything in terms of amount of van on the parking lot, just the way we purchase the van, and that's why we also need to add a gate, because it is a requirement for the dealership license to get the van from Ford. So here you have a few examples of the van that we are making, that we've made in the past few months.
All right. Is there anything else you want to add?
No, I don't know. Do you have questions?
So we will have a public hearing, and then we'll have questions afterwards.
Okay.
And to the city planner, they already exist, but in order to get their dealer license, that's the special use.
Yes. The assembly of the vans is a permitted use in the industrial district, it's the dealership license that is the special land use.
Okay. So if you have a seat, we'll have a public hearing, and we'll go from there. So this is a public hearing for the special use request for Drifter Vans to add a Class A dealership license to sell custom camper vans at two four one seven five Telegraph Road. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three four six zero four three nine. I would definitely be in support of a project like this, because it is just trending that these custom conversion vans, people are using them, and surprisingly, a lot of empty nesters are using them to travel and also to have a place to live while they're traveling, so this is not a bad thing. Something was said about security cameras in the schools, and I want to make a correction. Before former Chief Eric Hawkins left, I know what you're saying about the public hearing, Chief Hawkins was already talking to the schools about video cameras, so that wasn't a recent thing.
Please stick to the... Please stick to the...
So that will not change anything in terms of amount of van on the parking lot, just the way we purchase the van. And that's why we also need to add a gate because it is a requirement for the dealership license to get the van from Ford. So here you have a few examples of the van that we are making, that we've made in the past few months.
All right. Is there anything else you want to add?
No, I don't know. Do you have questions?
So we will have a public hearing, and then we'll have questions afterwards.
Okay.
And to the city planner, they already exist, but in order to get their dealer license, that's the special use.
Yes. The assembly of the vans is a permitted use in the industrial district. It's the dealership license that is the special land use.
Okay. So if you have a seat, we'll have a public hearing, and we'll go from there. So this is a public hearing for the special use request for Drifter Vans to add a Class A dealership license to sell custom camper vans at 24175 Telegraph Road. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I would definitely be in support of a project like this because it is just trending that these custom conversion vans, people are using them, and surprisingly, a lot of empty nesters are using them to travel and also to have a place to live while they're traveling. So this is not a bad thing. Something was said about security cameras in the schools, and I want to make a correction. Before former Chief Eric Hawkins left, I know what you're saying about the public hearing, Chief Hawkins was already talking to the schools about video cameras. So that wasn't a recent thing.
Please stick to the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I just wanted to say that. But yes, security cameras are definitely very important because we do have people in all areas that see something, and they want it, and they don't want to pay for it. And you really do have to secure your merchandise. How far is this in proximity from a residential neighborhood? Because I'm concerned about the paint fumes.
We'll answer all the questions after the public hearing.
So I'm just concerned about the paint fumes and if there's anything that they can do to lessen the noise in terms of the machinery that they're using. And is there a concrete post and panel wall around this particular business that would act as a sound barrier? But other than that, I'm in total support of this business. And if they get the license, I'd like to welcome that division to the city of Southfield. Thank you.
I'm for the project. I'm interested in...
You need your name and address for the record, please?
Gray Keeler, PO Box 4949, Southfield. I'm interested in if the vans that they're doing are energy-efficient vans so that when people cool and heat their vehicles, that they will retain their heat and also at the same time, it cuts down on the noise if they do the insulation into it. Thank you.
This is a public hearing for PSLU 24-0001. All right. See no one else. The public hearing is now closed. Deputy City Planner, can you answer those questions?
At one point, there is a screening wall at the rear of the property. It does abut residentially zone property to the west, but those properties are very deep. Two of the lots are vacant. There's one a little bit to this kind of kitty corner there. The painting does have to occur indoors in a paint booth with proper filtration. It is not something that occurs outside of the paint booth. That is a requirement. All of the assembly also occurs inside the building with overhead doors. They've been operating for a number of years now, and we have not received any complaints about noise or fumes at this location. But I'm sure Mr. Lusine could probably give you a little more information about their operations.
Yes, we only use, the finished carpenters are only using drills and saws, so there is no specific noise. And we've never received any complaint. We're also pretty far from anyone living around since our neighbors are AT&amp;T and manufacturing facility. For the question about the insulation, yes, we insulate the vans. I don't know if we can consider that a van is energy efficient, per se, but I mean, it's, the van itself is insulated and has all the panels on the roof.
Okay. Thank you. Council, any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
This is a very interesting project, and it's seemingly very valuable. And I'm looking, there was a determination made, there was no need for a traffic study?
A traffic study? Oh, no, no, because this will not increase the amount of vans that we will have because we are not able anyway to have more than 15 vans, so 10 vans on the parking lot and five vans inside the building. So the van that we will get from Ford will have to come in different batches. We are not able to store more vans than this. So this will not change the amount of vans on the lot or the traffic regulations.
Okay. You're based on your current volume?
Yes.
And it's determined that there will be no adverse effect on traffic?
Not based on the current use, but the planned, the planned amount of vans that we will produce hopefully by the end of the year.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Councilman Hicks?
To the chair. I move that we approve PSLU 24-0001, Special Use, to add a Class A dealership license.
Support. There's a lot of support. It was, the motion was made by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Haynes, to approve PSLU 24-0001 as presented with the recommendations of the city planner. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Our next item is PSLU 24-0004, a special use request by Carmita Johnson at Tots Academy Home Daycare to operate a group childcare home located at 27090 Berkshire Drive.
Thank you, Council President. This is on Berkshire Drive, just off of 11 Mile, a little west of Evergreen. They have a family daycare home now, operating it for a number of years, are looking to go up to a group daycare home, which raises you from six children up to 12. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Number of employees would be three. The zoning of the area is R2 residential. Master plan is moderate density, single-family. Those are consistent. Aerial photo of the existing home, detached garage, fenced yard. Current conditions, front of the home, some backyard photos. Show of the window well here for the egress from the basement. Floor plan, this is the main floor, though the childcare activity is mainly in the basement. Basement, and we do have some good photographs because I know that the plan is a little rudimentary. These are photos of the existing facility. One of the nicer ones I've seen. And the petitioner is present here to answer questions.
If you can just give your name and address and anything else you'd like to add?
My name is Carmita Johnson, and I reside at 27090 Berkshire Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48076.
You're Johnson, 27090 Berkshire Drive, Southfield, Michigan.
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I do, I would like to add, I know two weeks ago when we were here, I should have mentioned, if, hoping that this would go in my favor. I did want to speak on my security system and my, the cameras that I have installed in my childcare. I have cameras outside of my home and inside of my daycare. That way, I keep an eye on all my children at all times. When parents come, I am notified on my camera that a parent is arriving. They come through the back door, and I also have a camera in my daycare where I keep an eye on all my children at all times. So I'm hoping that that would sway in my favor. And I know because of the cameras that I have, my parents, they staggered, so I don't really have a overflow of clients coming in. So I don't really see an issue with an overflow where it would hurt the traffic in their neighborhood. So I just wanted to add that.
Okay. Thank you. We will have a public hearing and see what questions come up.
Thank you.
All right. So this is a public hearing, PSLU 24-0004, a special use request by Carmita Johnson to operate a group childcare home at 27090 Berkshire Drive. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. Again, my telephone number is 248-346-0439. We can never have enough daycare and enough, I'll call them, pre-kindergarten schools for our kids. But I'm not really clear on changing it from an academy to a group care home. Does that mean like an overnight stay? Or is it just for the day during the school hours? That's the first question. The setup is absolutely phenomenal. Makes me want to volunteer. I mean, it literally looks like a school, and that is so amazing. I wanted to find out more about the age group of the children, and is there like a daycare type of curriculum? Like, are you preparing them for kindergarten or first grade? And if she's familiar with the Montessori education method? And if she has any intentions on incorporating the Montessori education style in her facility? But it's absolutely beautiful. I'm impressed, and I would be totally in support of PSLU 24-0004. Absolutely amazing, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Johnson. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Tyler Dunkinson, and...
I'm Carissa Dunkinson. We reside at 27535 Berkshire Drive. We are just down the street from the Johnsons', and we are also very lucky to send our daughter to stay with and be cared for by Ms. Johnson and her lovely staff.
So we just wanted to say we are in favor, and we hope that more children can get the kind of exposure to other children and development that we've seen in our daughter. And the Johnsons have been great, and again, we are in favor. Thank you.
I also, I'm an educator, and I am so blessed to have Ms. Johnson be the first voice for my child. Ms. Johnson does instill Montessori, the Montessori mindset and has had additional training in Montessori. She is growing lifelong learners, and we are so lucky in Southfield to have somebody be the foundation for our children like Ms. Johnson, so.
Hello. Hi. I'm a little nervous. My name is Jalika Watkins, 20720 Knobwood Drive, Jalika Watkins, 20720 Knobwood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, Apartment 110. And all three of my children have attended Mrs. and Mr. Johnson's daycare. I absolutely love it. All three, they go during the summer. She has taught my children so much, not only education-wise, but as far as being good people, being kind. And she just has so much to offer, and if it can be opened up for other children to be able to learn the things that she teaches, it would be truly amazing. My three-year-old is, she's not here, but she is so smart. She loves going, and I just feel like, you know, if more children are allowed to go, it would be truly amazing. Y'all agree?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Earl Crum, 27126 Pierce. I would like to thank the Johnsons for this establishment and building the next generations. We need more positive establishment in Southfield, I think. Thank you, Johnson family, and congratulations to you.
Good evening. Stacy Jackson, Southfield resident. I had not come here planning to speak on this, but am moved and compelled to do so.
Can you please give your address for the record?
I'd prefer just to say Southfield resident. I am super excited about this opportunity and this business venture that is here before you, and it is a delight to see members of her community come out and speak in favor of it. Actual children and parents who commit themselves to this business. The most important thing to a person is their family and their kids. So if you trust a person with your kids, that says a great deal. I'd also am mindful that, I want to say last year, another home daycare came before you, and there were residents here in that community that highly spoke against it, but it was still passed. I am hoping and very hopeful that this council sees that these pictures aren't just one of the nicer one. It is the nicest daycare that has ever been presented here. I believe the homeowners are wonderful people, had an opportunity to meet them during the last meeting, and you can tell that the Johnsons are people who care. And that's basically compassion always reaches everyone. So I support this and do hope that the council does as well.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on PSLU 24-0004? The public hearing is now closed.
Mr. President?
You have a question?
I'm ready to move.
The city planner, I want the assistant, the deputy planner to answer the questions that were asked.
Particularly on the issue of overnight stays, neither family daycare homes or group daycare homes allow overnight stays. They are daytime daycares. The difference is in the number. It used to be six for family daycares, but during the pandemic, I believe they raised that number to seven, but the group daycares is 12. The family daycares, they can do by right. They don't require the special land use approval. The group daycares, because of the increased number in a residential setting, do require the special land use. That's really the main difference is just the number of children, not that they're allowed overnight stays. That'd be a residential stay, and that wouldn't be permitted unless it was a state licensed residential facility of some sort that would be of similar density, very different from what's being proposed here.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Brightwell? You have a...
I'm very impressed with this daycare. And a couple of weeks ago, we asked you, can you hear me? Oh, that's fine. A couple of weeks ago, we asked you, asked you some, you know, some very detailed questions, and I am real pleased that you were able to answer those questions with respect to the mix of children you will have at any point in time and the adults that will be around from a gathering standpoint. And I've been here for a few years, and we've had several daycare people come before us for approval, and I would just, I can literally say you, I hate to say this, but you are the most knowledgeable with respect to the operation that you are undertaking with respect to the details of it. And you're well qualified, you're knowledgeable, and obviously, when the customers come in and say how pleased they are, that additionally adds to the comfort that I would have in voting for this. So, Mr. Chair, if there are no more questions, I would like to move that...
Nope, there's questions.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Haynes?
I just want to say, I'd like to say thank you for running such a professional business here in the city of Southfield. You represent us well, you and your husband, and thank you for all that you do for children. And it's so important that a mother can take their children to somewhere where they know and trust that they will be in good hands. That's a big deal and a very serious one, and thank you for doing a great job and continuing and much success to you in the continued efforts of your business. Thank you.
And I'd like to make a motion, if there are no others, to approve PSLU 24-0004, the special use request by Carmita Johnson, Tots Academy House Home Daycare, to operate a group childcare home on property located at 27090 Berkshire Drive, Southfield, Michigan,
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Haynes, supported by Councilman Hicks, to approve PSLU 24-0004, the special use request by Carmita Johnson for a group childcare home located at 27090 Berkshire Drive. located at 27090 Berkshire Drive. Any further discussion or questions?
I have just, we're all up here fighting to approve, move that.
And I appreciate you all, I do.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next public hearing is PSLU 24-0005, a special use request for Myra Wholesale Corp. to add a furniture wholesale and warehouse at 23840 Eight Mile Road.
Thank you, Council President. So this is an I-1 industrial district property. I think I mentioned, or I think Terry mentioned last time, a little bit of odd in your code. Warehousing associated with a manufacturing operation is permitted by right, but warehousing on its own is a special land use. So this had previously been a warehouse for Kamau as part of their operations, so it hadn't required this approval. And then it got taken over, they moved out of it, this entity took over, and they thought that it was warehousing, it was fine, and it turned out, they'd actually been in it a little while, we caught wind of that and trying to get this kind of straightened out and legal now. So both wholesaling and warehousing are a special land use in the I-1. The facility is configured as a warehouse as it was its previous use. Looking at hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The number of employees total is 23, 13 warehouse employees, 10 delivery service employees. The, as I said, the zoning is I-1 with a little bit of a P zoning district that kind of wraps the back corner of the property. Southfield Technology Corridor is a master plan, so those are consistent. Site aerial, just shows the area around it. It's industrial on either side and kind of to the north, and then there's that small apartment complex along Sherman. Existing conditions of the site, you can see the little showroom in the front there where the wholesale goes occurring, that's their liquidation, scratch and dent sale area. The bulk of the building is warehousing. Just kind of wrapping around the building, fencing, trash cans. Northwest, this is from Eight Mile. Site plan, as you can see, it's a large building, extends deep in the property. There's parking along the side and in the rear. And then you can see this little area kind of off to the left of that, that's mostly clear, that's your showroom area, the rest of it is warehousing pretty much. This is the front third of the building with the kind of showroom, wholesale area in the front, all to the left, and then warehousing to the right. More warehousing in an interior truckload where they store their trucks, and then the rear third of the building, more warehousing. Second floor, there are limited areas with office toward the front, and then I think we have a mezzanine and another, a small mezzanine and another area toward the back, not a lot of second floor. As you can see, the inside of the building, the bottom left there is the interior, the truck, interior truckload with the trucks in it, and then the rest of it is just aisles and aisles of furniture in boxes stored to go out to the stores. My understanding is this is the central warehouse for the furniture stores they own. They own about seven furniture stores in Metro Detroit. This is their central warehouse from which they distribute to those stores, but also do deliveries to customers. Elevation of the buildings as existing, got some raised seam metal on the front, mostly block and some brick. 3D rendering of the property. And then we've got the petitioner is here to answer any questions.
If you can give your name and address for the record, please?
Of course. My name is Amar, and I'm representing 23840 West Eight Mile Road, Maria Warehouse.
Do you have anything? If you can speak louder into the mic?
Sorry.
And then?
This is better? Yeah, better. I'm sorry.
Anything you'd like to add?
Not really, nothing, he covered everything. It's just, yeah, we are a warehouse, we act as a service provider for our shops, for our showrooms. We currently have seven showrooms, soon to become eight. And as mentioned, we are the central warehouse for the shops, for their deliveries, for their pickups. And yeah.
Okay. So if you have a seat, we'll have a public hearing.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
This is a public hearing for PSLU 24-0005, a special use request for Myra Wholesale Corp. to add a furniture wholesale warehouse at 23408 Mile Road. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 2483460439. Anybody coming to these council meetings, know for a public hearing, you're supposed to give your name and address. I think that it's an awesome thing for this building to finally be getting some TLC. I'm hoping that they're going to redo the facade and not just go in there and start selling furniture. At one time, that was a stellar location. I noticed on one of the pictures in the back, it was a lot of trash and debris, so I'm hoping that they're going to give the actual parcel number and cite some TLC and clean up some of the trash and the debris. But I wanted to ask about the difference between, are you selling furniture or are you wholesaling furniture for other companies to come and buy from you? If they could just explain that a little bit more clearly and wholesale and warehouse? I mean, I know what that means, but I'm not clear in terms of what they actually plan to do. And then if they could just list for the record the names or where there are other seven stores in the Metro Detroit area is located, it would be great. But it looked like it's going to be a stellar operation. I saw a lot of boxes, I saw a lot of trucks, looked like the trucks are in good shape. So if they could just answer those few questions, I would be in support of PSLU 24-0005 for the special use request for this furniture store or wholesale store. Thank you.
My name is Gwenda Ogutree. I am at 21051 Sherman Avenue, Southfield, 48033. You are my neighbor, and I get to see all this activity behind my house. And one of the questions I have, because there used to be a wall between me and the property there, and I was wondering, is that wall going to be replaced? Because right now, I can see a lot of the activity behind there, and sometimes I'm questioning if somebody is coming on my property or not. So that is one of my questions. And the other one is, it says that you have a 350-foot buffer on your location, you know, and 95% of my property is in that buffer zone. So can you elaborate on that as well, too? But as for the not having a vacant parcel behind me, I'm very much for that. Just want to let you know, just had those two questions that wanted to get asked.
I'd like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones.
I'm Earl Crum, 27126 Pierce, Southfield, Michigan. I am happy to see that someone is interested in using that facility, I think it was a carpet place. My question for prospective owner, are you going to make sure that everything you store in the warehouse is safe? We know recently there was a warehouse explosion in Clinton Township. We want to make sure that whatever is stored there, it is properly used for that facility and safe for the community and safe for the city. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to PSLU 24-0005? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. Deputy City Planner, can you answer those questions?
Yeah. One of the things on the photos, you will notice, it looks a little debris on the site. Those photos were taken right after a windstorm, and they have tidied up the site since then. But yeah, we had this discussion at Planning Commission, because we've been out there to take photos apparently right after there was one of those, you know, 40, 50 mile-an-hour gust winds, and it kind of made a mess of the site. They have tidied it up since, and the Planning Commission was appreciative of their efforts because between the first and the second Planning Commission meeting, they had tidied a lot of that up. With regard to the screen wall in the back corner there, I assume it's that one home north of the apartments, I'll have to check that. We do have an administrative site plan in the works, so if that wall has been removed or damaged, we can require them to replace it as part of the administrative site plan approval. I had to make a note to look into that. So that can be addressed as part of the administrative site plan. It could be added as a condition to the special land use as well, if you wanted to put those together. A screening wall would normally be required between residential and industrial or commercial use. Would it be entirely likely one was there previously? We might have missed it because I think that there's a little bit of heavy vegetation in that area right now. I'll need to go back there and do a little actual poke it around in the weeds, I guess, see what's going on. Might be able to find an old site plan, too. So we will look into that. With regard to the, my understanding is they don't, while you can come in and buy the, the scratch and dent, they don't really advertise that because that is not the main business. The majority of this business is warehousing. It is furniture. The fire marshal and the building official have been through the building. They did make them open up some aisle widths, I believe. It got, it was a little overcrowded in a few spots, but it's not, the fire marshal and the building official don't consider it a hazard. It's furniture, not fireworks or vape or nitrogen oxide tanks, that stuff that blew up in the other township that burned, that was something else. So yeah, those were the issues that were raised, and yeah, not unsafe. We will check in the wall issue, and it's primarily warehousing. That little area is just their scratch and dent. You know, if you ever went to some of the places where they make furniture, actual construct furniture, they'll have these as well. There's a number of manufacturers who have kind of a scratch and dent or an outlet where they do that sort of thing. They do it on-site here. I don't know this, I know there's a couple of different, the owner or the applicant can probably answer the question better on where the stores are at and what their names are.
Do you want to come up and answer those questions, please?
Okay, so, sorry about this, I wasn't prepared for this question. So we have seven stores. We've got one in Sterling Heights.
Can you speak into the mic?
Apologies, I keep on missing, I know about this. So we operate seven showrooms. One is located in Sterling Heights. We've got two located, one located in Livonia. We've got two in Detroit, one on Joy Road in Greenfield, the other on the east side of Detroit. And we operate one on, between Ryan and Dequender, on Eight Mile Road. We have another location there. And we're also in the process, I believe, of opening a new store in Inxter, but that's something in the process, nothing, no pen and paper have been concluded, so, yeah.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilman Cruz?
Yeah. I think one of them was already answered. I think Ms. Gerald asked a question I wanted to ask. Is this, this is not a place for people to come buy furniture? Like, if I wanted a couch, could I come to this place and buy a couch? Or are you all just taking the product to different stores?
Okay. So the shop that we have in front of the warehouse, if you see something there that you like, then I can be of service. However, if you want to see our products, you have to go and visit our showrooms. The showroom that I have in front of the warehouse, strictly speaking, is designed for last-piece items, which the showrooms are not willing to take anymore, or damaged items, which I cannot sell anymore at the full price, at full retail price. So I showcase them in the showroom, and it will be a fraction of the price, and a lot of people tend to come, well, not a lot, but you know, the people that tend to come to our shop is people that are either new to the country, have been sent by organizations that know about us, have heard of us, have word of mouth. People need to be truthful. You know, I am, you know, everybody that comes here comes because they only got an X amount of money, and they want either a sofa or a coffee table or, you know, something. And I give it to them for a fraction of the price because they might have a scratch or might have a rip or might have a dent. Or another scenario is where it's a brand-new product, but it's the last-piece items and it's got no value to the shops, and again, I sell it for a fraction of the price. So that's the only purpose of this shop. But if you want to showcase all our products and the brand-new products, you have to go through our showrooms.
Okay, so it's basically things that have been discarded for sale somewhere else?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And you provide an opportunity for somebody to?
Yes, sir.
That may not mind that scratch on the table or a little rip in the couch or whatever. Okay, got you. The only other thing I want to ask you is about the beautification of the place. I mean, are there plans to do something on the outside that makes it look a little bit nicer? And is it going to be any little trees or flowers, anything like that on there?
So part of the Planning Commission, when it first came into discussion, greenery was one of the first things that was requested. And now, this is for me personally and for my employer, this has been kind of a long process, it's been months in the making. So at the moment, kind of, we're holding off on anything until the zoning is confirmed. Once the zoning is confirmed, then we can take the next step towards our, you know, CFOs and things like that. So this is where we are at the moment. I don't want to over, you know, jump the gun or overstep. I want to take it step by step, so just in case something happened. But we do have plans, you know, it's even showcased on our floor plans and site plans, you know, like the, between us and our neighbors, we're trying to put some greenery and things like that to make it more presentable. The trash areas, we're trying to change. You know, I've got a little shed which I'm going to put the trash area there, so again, more presentable. You know, it's all in process, it's all on my mind, and I'm just waiting for the right time to execute.
All right. Just wanted to make sure it was on the agenda.
Yes, absolutely, 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 absolutely.
Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. President.
Through the chair, we have actually been working with them on the administrative site plan for landscape improvements, particularly on the Eight Mile frontage, along with bike racks, improved handicap parking and ADA access for the showroom area. So there are some of those improvements that are already in the works. The only one I hadn't really caught wind of was the wall issue, but we will look into that before the administrative site plan goes through.
I just want to add something in relation to that. So as far as the warehouse and on the surroundings, I've never touched or altered or changed anything. So I was kind of taken back by what the lady said in relation to the wall. So, yeah, I'm in the gray zone in relation to that one.
We'll look into it.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make it clear to everybody, I haven't altered or touched anything.
Councilman Brightwell?
Well, I have a couple of questions, but, Mr. Planner, I'm concerned about the resident, concerned about her backyard. How was that resolved? Did you say you were chit-looking to that?
Yeah, we still haven't approved, we have a, because this is an I-1 industrial district, the site plan is administrative, but that still means Planner Crowe needs to approve it, and once he realizes there's an issue with the wall, we'll dig into the old plans and go out and like, look on that property line closely to see if there's wall foundations, see if we can figure out what the status of that prior wall was. It does, I've run across this in my career where screening walls will get damaged, and if they're behind a building, maybe nobody notices, and the prior owner may have just taken it down if it was damaged rather than replace it. And maybe the city didn't catch it at that time, but we're catching it now. So, like I said, if we really want to put some teeth in that, the council could add a condition that the screening wall, the required screening wall, be repaired or replaced as needed as part of the approval.
Okay, well, I know there's language in here, nothing is adverse to the surrounding, so that would be something that's adverse. So, well, let us know what's going on. Another question, and I'm, you know, I followed the news, and every once in a while, there's a fire, something going on with a warehouse. Do you have a fire prevention? Do you have a fire prevention program? You have an update fire prevention program for this location?
Yes, we, the warehouse is run by guardian alarm security. So we have sprinkler systems, we have fire alarms, we have cameras. I've got over three hundred, three hundred and fifty cameras inside around that warehouse. We've been operating this warehouse for three and a half years now. I've never had any issues with fire or close to.
Okay, Mr. Planner, is there a requirement ahead of fire prevention, prevention people to deal with this?
Prior to getting this, the certificate of occupancy, the fire marshal does have to inspect and sign off. And it is my understanding that the building and fire code are pretty firm on furniture warehouses. Furniture warehouses having a fire sprinkler suppression system. Because, you know, furniture, that amount of furniture in our space, if it wasn't suppressed, could get a pretty good fire going. It wouldn't be explosive, but it burned pretty good. So I'm, my experience professionally is that every furniture storage and furniture store of any substantial size has to have a suppression system under the Michigan fire.
That was, that was a reason for my question. This last question is very selfish. How many Southfield residents do you employ?
This asking, this question has been asked three times to be truthful. So in my warehouse and my job, to be truthful, I have a high turnover. I've had a few. I've had about four, I think four Southfield residents in the last three and a half years. And each one of them lasted less than a day. My, my job is a daunting job, you know. There's, you know, there's no rest for the wicked. It's, you know, you move twenty-four seven, you don't stop only for your breaks. And it takes a special type of person to kind of accommodate. So I've, I have employees from about Dearborn, Hamtramck, Sterling Heights, Shelby Township. I've employed four, I think four or five from Southfield. We had with agents, through agencies. But you know, none of them lasted. And I've always said I'm more than happy and welcome to accommodate and welcome staff members. But it's just the type of job that is, not everybody is willing to kind of do that job. And it's a characteristic thing, so you know, it's not a problem.
I got you. Okay, it's not a shortstopper, but you said four.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. In the last three and a half years, I would say about four or five from the city of Southfield, for sure, for sure.
I'm assuming that life goes on. Okay, well, that is the extent of my questions.
Counselor Mayhew? Yes, I have a couple of questions. Do you have regular hours of operation or is it by appointment only for the showroom, for the people that are coming to look at it? Is it regular hours or?
The showroom, we open from ten to five. The only time I will not open the shop, and there are times where I don't open the shop, if I have a shortage in staff. You know, if I can accommodate, you know, my main priority is the warehouse and the warehouse in itself. And if I cannot accommodate for the needs of the warehouse, then I will not open the shop on that day. We average, kind of foot flow in the shop, we average maybe three to five customers a week. So that's, so that's why it's always allowed me to be flexible with the hours of the shop. But technically speaking, the hours, operating hours are between ten and five, Monday to Saturday.
Okay, and you said, what's going to happen on the second floor?
Sorry?
You said, what's going to happen on the second floor? I couldn't, I didn't hear very well.
No, I didn't mention a second floor.
There's a second floor, you said?
There's an office area, kind of a mezzanine office area and another small mezzanine area. They're small. If you look at the actual floor plan, it's not much of the building. You can see it on this one, the second floor. So it's, that top left is a small second story area with like some office space, it looks like. And then there's a small mezzanine, kind of in the bottom middle right, not much. It's a very small part of the building. And I think the front area was office space. That small area in the back, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the purpose of that is.
And we don't use that. We never use that space.
In the back where you said there was a, excuse me, a fence, or was a fence, is there lighting back there?
There's lighting on the rear of the building. I don't think there's pole lighting on the rear of the property. Yeah. Yeah, so there's, there's lighting on the rear, mounted on the rear of the building, but not freestanding pole lights in that back area.
Counsel, any other questions? Councilman Banks?
I'm sorry, I'm not clear. Did you say there was a fence when you moved in four years ago?
No, I said I never altered or touched any fences or moved any fencing or anything like that. I've kept the building as is since the day I got it. The fencing, the, the, the building in itself, I've never touched or altered anything. So when it was mentioned that there was a wall or a fence or something that was moved, it would have been like that since I moved into the building. But yeah, that's the only thing I remarked on is that I've never altered or touched anything in relation to the outer fencing or inside or outside the building.
Okay, I guess to my colleagues, I think we should add that, you know, since there is a residential dwelling unit next to this property, that a fence, some type of fencing, you know, per the city planner, you know, be considered.
I think we're supposed to have, the ordinance calls for a wall, correct?
A wall? Is it a wall or a fence?
A fence is an option if a wall is not necessarily appropriate. Most of the industrial layers of building residential actually have either poured concrete or masonry walls.
I think the wall.
Most of them. Like a good example would be the back of that drifter van property where it busts the residential, there's a concrete wall. That's a pretty common where the industrial busts the residential. So like I said, I'd have to do some digging on like what, sometimes we have older buildings that predate that requirement and there could have been a fence instead. I'd have to do some more digging. But certainly there should be screening, a fence or a wall. You could leave that to the judgment of the city planner as to what's exactly the most appropriate in that location.
Can I just add the fact that I don't have any areas where there isn't a fence all around the warehouse? There is a fence around the whole warehouse, which pertains myself and my neighbors. I've got Paradise Property, which is mechanic and cars. And I've got two other manufacturing companies around me and I've got a fence on a three hundred and sixty, three hundred and sixty angle. So I've got a fence around my whole plaza from end to finish.
That's chain link industrial, industrial. They're talking about a screening fence or wall between you and the residential.
Well, and I don't know what the square footage is, but it looks like it, it's pretty wide. And to put a concrete fence there, if there was never a concrete fence before, I think that's asking a lot. So.
Excuse me? You have to address the council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
Can we, can we find out? I think she was trying to say something. She was there before and said something that there was a type of wall. Can we at least hear what that, so we'll know. I mean, I think that would help us. And this is a resident, so she's, it would affect her.
The city planner will investigate to see what was there before. And will require, and we can add into the motion that we can require what was there before to be replaced, whether it's a fence, a screening fence or a concrete wall, or if nothing is there. You know, we'll say the planning department is very good before they issue their certificate of occupancy to make sure that all requirements, even if the parking lot is not stripped appropriately, they will hold up that CFO to make sure that all the requirements are met. If you'd like to add it into the motion, you can do that as well. But as the deputy city planner mentioned, it can also be addressed through the administrative review that is going on right now for the building.
Mr. Chair? I think, I think we got it. Well, anyway, I brought up the whole thing about that fence. I heard someone bring up something about light. And since the young lady said her resident is there, I want to make sure we don't get into light pollution with respect to her location. Can you look into that also, if there's a lights back there and or proposed new lights?
Right.
That there's no light pollution spilling over to the young lady's residence.
Installation of new lighting would require an actual lighting plan and photometric study to ensure the current compliance. If they're currently over the limits, though, we can do enforcement, address that issue as well. So we can look into that as well. We do want that rear parking lot lit some, just for security purposes, most likely. But in dark areas behind buildings tend to attract undesirable activity in some cases. So there's, there's a balancing act between enough lighting for security, but not too much lighting to disturb the neighbors. So we can look into that as well.
All right, Councilman Hicks, you have a question. Are there any other questions?
No.
I just wanted to make a couple of statements. If it's a lighting, it would be to me more sense to put a wall instead of a fence because if the lighting goes through that fence, you know, that would be on the other side. You know, just to say, and just a thought too, that area, that corner is like the door to Southfield coming in. And I know you talked about you're going to have the landscaping done. But in addition to that, I would just recommend paying real close attention because that is a trash drop off where people just throw stuff. So I mean, I have a place like that in my neighborhood and it's, the boxwoods hold the trash. So maybe if you could have someone to daily look at that, because that is like the first sight you see coming in Southfield off a telegraph. And that's real important, you know, it makes a lot of difference.
I'll take that on board. We have been very blessed. Like I've never had any something like that, you know, happen to us where people are loitering or throwing trash. So we've been blessed, but you know, I always keep an eye for sure. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
All right, Councilman Hicks?
Through the chair, I move that we approve PSLU twenty-four dash zero 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 five to add a furniture wholesale and warehouse located at two three eight four zero, Eight Mile Road, Southfield, Michigan, with the conditions based on the findings of the planning department, determining if a screening wall was in place and requiring remediation and or repair or build if necessary.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Hoag, to approve PSLU two four dash zero 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 five, the special use request at two three eight four zero, Eight Mile Road with the recommendations of the planner as well as the additional request from the council. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, our last public hearing is PSLU two four dash zero 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 three, a special use request by John McLeod of Cloud Opportunity to build and operate a one-story adult-use recreational marijuana retail establishment at two eight six one zero Northwestern Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As noted, this is a B-three zoned property. We're looking at Northwestern. It's split off of the larger site that you see there. It's a one acre site. And they're looking to do an adult-use marijuana retail establishment at this location. The hours of operation on the slider, Monday through Saturday, would be normally nine to six on the weekends. I think in the actual resolution that we gave you, it actually just says per the current requirements of the ordinance in case those change. So this, they were asking for nine to nine, but the ordinance doesn't currently allow nine to nine on Fridays and Saturdays. But it is corrected in the resolution. Number of employees, twenty-five. That would be the total number of employees, not per shift. As I said, the current zoning of the site is B-three, general business. The future land uses, regional mixed use, which are consistent. We did create a map here showing the radiuses for the buffers. So the boxes, the little blue box in the middle is the parcel approximately. The yellow circle is the five hundred foot setback, which applies to residential uses, residential districts, drug-free zones, adult regulated uses, including sexually oriented businesses, schools, related institutions, childcare facilities and parks. So in that five hundred foot radius, none of those items are there. And then there's a fifteen hundred foot radius, which is the green circle, which is for your marijuana retailers. And it actually has the, the alternative financial institutions are also in that radius. So they do have one of the alternative financial institutions that, at the blue box with the arrow is where there's a check cashing location. They have an agreement to buy out that lease and move that business out of the radius should this get approved. It is one of the conditions that they execute on that and that business cease to operate before we will issue any permits on the project. So we're not going to like issue permits, have them start building and then something doesn't happen. I did check that with the, with our, the city planner and he said, yeah, in this case, because of the unusual nature of that condition, we wouldn't sign off on permits being issued until that's done. This actually was another request that came from council, I believe. Just kind of wanting to see what the distances were between the proposed and existing marijuana facilities. So you see the green one down at the bottom, that's the one approved grow facility on Eight Mile. Then the two blue stars are the two existing retailers, Dream and Loom. And then the yellow star is the proposed location. The minimum spacing is fifteen hundred feet between those. Even the closest is forty-seven fifty, which is about a mile. So they're, they are spread out a bit over there. We just wanted to have that for context on the distances for the existing facilities. We did note into the licensing ordinance, there is a cap of five retailers. This would be the third. But given the separation requirements that we have in the ordinance and zoning, it's very hard to find these sites and get them straightened out. I've been, I've had many inquiries that almost all of them were within five hundred foot of residential or residential zoning and that's just a no-go. This is the site aerial. You can see the blue box there is the approximate location of the parcel. The parcel actually extends down to Northwestern and it takes on part of that little service drive. But that's where the building improvements are going. This is the site landscape plan. Building is closer to Northwestern. Parking is behind. They've got an entrance off of the parking lot in the rear. Loading zone is on the west side of the building and that striped area goes into a secure door on that side. This is the floor plan. Also, it's their security plan. All those little wedges you see on the plan are their cameras and camera angles in the interior. Then you also see the half circles or the three quarter circles on the exterior of the building, which I guess are exterior cameras. Building elevations, this is one of the things the planning commission spent some time on and they've come a ways with it. It was a fairly plain building in the first version. This is, I believe, the third or the fourth version of the elevations. These are the sides. Couple of renderings of the building. Cultured stone and hardy plank siding with windows. Another rendering of the building. And then the petitioner is present to answer any questions.
All right, if you can give your name and address and add anything you'd like.
Sure, thank you. John McLeod, three one three Park Avenue, Detroit, Michigan, four eight two two six. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Mayor, Administrator, Distinguished Counsel. Nice to be in front of you again. I feel like we made some good progress at the last meeting a couple of weeks ago. So I won't take up too much of your time and I'd be happy to answer any questions that come up. Thank you.
So we will have a public hearing now and then we'll see what questions come from the public. This is a public hearing for PSLU two four dash zero 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 three, a special use request by John McLeod of Cloud Opportunity to build and operate a one-story adult-use recreational marijuana retail establishment at two eight six one zero Northwestern Highway. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pamela Gerald, P.O., Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three four six zero four three nine. I was happy that the assistant planner showed the location and how far the other medicinal slash recreational facilities that we have. But I just have a couple of questions. I noticed that he gave a Detroit address, so my first question is, why Southfield? The second question is, do you already own a facility of this nature and if so, where is it located? What type of ventilation concerns have you or will you address to curb the smell of it? Because the places that we have now, you cannot. Because the places that we have now, you cannot smell the recreational product when you drive past there. I'm concerned about the signage, what is it going to display? Is it gonna have a name that you can't really associate to recreational marijuana, or what the city requires? And then, did you get with the Police Department and Crime Prevention to talk about other potential security measures that you can take? One thing about it, our youth from junior high on up, you're not gonna stop them from using marijuana. You're not gonna be able to keep them from getting it, because before all of this came about, kids somehow or another got a hold of marijuana. So the fact that it's legal, there are some state safeguards on it, if you wanna do it, at least be safe about it, but those are the questions that I have, and specifically, twelve and Northwestern Highway, what's next door to this? Because I'm trying to visualize the location, so if you could give me a landmark, so that I could be a little bit more clear, that would help me, but based on those questions, if he can answer them successfully, I voted for two of the other ones, and I guess I would be in favor of supporting PSLU-24-003, the special land use request by this gentleman to open up a recreational facility, but I just hope we won't smell it. Thank you.
I'm in favor of you giving them their use of the marijuana, because you said that you wanted to do convenience, you wanted to be business-friendly and everything else. This is a business. You want convenience, this is convenience. So if they wanna be open longer, should be open up to twelve o'clock, like you said, in Ann Arbor, you let a company get alcohol that was already in violation and was brought up, so I can't see you saying no to this. You want to see them make more money, bigger profit, okay, they're gonna do all these things. So I think there should be a yes, there should only be, at maximum, two people to say no, because everybody else said yes to alcohol.
This is a public hearing for PSLU-24-0003.
Earl Crum, 27126 Pierce, Southfield, Michigan. I think there, the council were talking on last week about the limitations of marijuana facilities in Southfield, and I also, like Pam, like to ask the question, I think the address was Troy, I'm not sure if it was Troy or Detroit, how many facilities do you have in that city? Have they allowed you to establish a facility in that city? And if there is a limitation on marijuana facilities in Southfield, it need to be communicated to the public, and let's stop this marijuana situation in Southfield. Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else, the...
Louis Williams, Southfield resident. I urge the City Council to vote no on this proposal. I say that we have too many recreational marijuana businesses operating in our city I urge that we put a, in fact, put a moratorium on any more recreational marijuana businesses in our city. Our young people and our citizens, adult citizens, don't have, don't need to be confronted with these businesses on a continuing basis. If people want marijuana, there are plenty of places for them to get it, let them go somewhere else. In the past, we called ourselves the All-American City, the Family City, and that's fine. I'm very pleased with Southfield as a city, so, but we don't wanna be known as the Marijuana City. You want marijuana, just go over to Southfield, they got plenty of places. I don't want that said about our city. I again urge that you, that you not allow any more maria, recreational marijuana businesses to open up in our fine city. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on PSLU-24-0003? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. If the petitioner can come back and answer some of those questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So first question, and this got asked at the council meeting two weeks ago, why Southfield? And I say, why not Southfield? It's the center of it all, it's a great community, great access to freeways, great access to an employee base, lots of good public services, so that's why Southfield. Secondly, the smell would be nonexistent, as the Speaker pointed out, the other two locations, there are some state standards that were held to, and there are some local standards that were held to, but charcoal filtration is like a gating item, bare minimum, and that takes care of all the smell, so there will be no marijuana smell that will be omitting from the facility. Asked about other locations, this will be the third location, if you approve it, for our new brand, Bloomery Cannabis. Previously, we operated under the flag of Cloud Cannabis, which at that time, we had fifteen locations. I sold those on January thirty-first and started this new brand, and as far as, at that time, I did have a Detroit store, which is where I live, I'm...
You said Detroit or Troy?
Detroit. I'm a born and raised city of Detroit, public school kid, and lifelong Detroit-er, and at my previous brand, we did have a Detroit store on the east side, currently, we do not have a Detroit store. So I think he thought I said Troy.
Yeah, it was, they sound very similar.
They're very similar.
And so you currently have two other stores?
Correct. Currently, the Bloomery is operating in Mount Clemens and in New Buffalo, Michigan.
Council, do you have any questions?
I do have one.
Sure. Councilman Cruz?
Just again, on the location, just so I'm clear on this, so when you're going up Northwestern, there's a little loop right there, you can go anywhere to start, where the theater used to be, is that where we're talking about?
It's the second, it's the second loop. Here's the loop, to go into Star Theater, Theater's here, this is like a dead end.
Yeah.
The business to the left is a Chase Bank, that's a Chase Bank directly to the left of us.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was talking about, okay.
Yeah, the building to the immediate west is a Chase Bank with access from Twelve Mile and Northwestern.
Correct.
Then there's an office building, I believe, to the east, and one, that little notch is another office building.
Well, there'd be, so coming off of Northwestern, is that gonna be a primary entrance, or are people gonna be coming back off of, what's the back street?
Twelve Mile?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Councilman, currently, right now, our parcel does not extend out to Twelve Mile, so Northwestern Highway is the only access to our site. Now, the overall development of the six-point-two, or the five-point-two remaining acres of that site envision having access to Twelve Mile, and that's something that the planning department is kind of asked for as part of the larger development, so if you see on our site plan, Tom, if you can bring that up, you see the, the drive at the top there, that stunted drive, that's really a driveway to nowhere right now, but eventually, that would be some type of an access that would go out to Twelve Mile, or allow the flow for the larger site to Twelve Mile. But right now, our parcel ends right at the top, right where that, right where that street dead ends.
Okay. I was just worried about maybe the possibility of some traffic issues, but I'm sure we've taken a look at that, Mr. President.
Yeah. Usually in these cases, where there's two frontages like that, we try to make sure there's not a straight shot through the site, that if you're, you're going to someone on the site, then you could exit either, but not cut through. This one's far enough from the intersection that I wouldn't anticipate a huge problem with it, unlike that one gas station that was proposed at Northwestern and Twelve Mile, where they, they actually introduced sort of a chicane to prevent that cut-through traffic, because otherwise, yeah, you would've gotten, like, where that FedEx building is now, you get cut-throughs on that corner all the time.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Mayor? Councilman Brightwell?
Oh, I wanna make a move that we approve PSLU-24-003 as presented.
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve PSLU-24-0003, the special use request of Cloud Opportunity, to build and operate a one-story adult-use recreational marijuana establishment at 28610 Northwestern Highway. Council, any further questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
There are five yes, two opposed, the opposed were Councilwoman Banks and Councilman Hicks.
Point of privilege on my, excuse me, on my no vote for the record, excuse me, I am not in favor of recreational marijuana, and I have voted no on all the previous recreational marijuana facilities in the city. Thank you.
All right, the motion passes by a vote of five to two. Thank you. The next item we have is a site plan, PSP-24-0001, Site Plan Review Request of the Cloud Opportunity for their marijuana retail establishment. Mr. Deputy City Planner, do you have anything additional to add?
No, I just would note that they are required to provide a security plan approved by the Police Department, they have to have an odor control plan, they have to do a site maintenance agreement, so there is some control over some of the issues that have been raised. I know signage was asked about, signage is covered by the, is done through the Building Department, is a separate issue, it's not considered here because of First Amendment issues, but the signage is limited to, in the plan, they do show a monument sign and one wall sign, which is what they're permitted to have without going to the zoning board.
And I will add that, for all of these establishments, even prior to the city approving the ordinance change to allow for recreational marijuana, the city administrator and I actually went to tour one of the facilities, and the security is extremely tight, there's cameras everywhere that feed directly into the Police Department, they do take everything very seriously, you can't even, pretty much if you're not even twenty-one, they won't allow you in the building, and they do have armed security guards as well, inside and outside the parking lots, to help with the security. So if the petitioner has nothing else to add, council, any other questions? Accept a motion? Councilman Brightwell?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve PSP-24-0001, Site Plan Review as presented.
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve PSP-24-0001 as presented with the recommendations from the plan. No, this is a site plan. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The motion passes five to two, no votes from Councilmember Banks and Hicks.
And Council President?
Yes.
Point of privilege on my no vote for the record, please, again, I am not in favor of recreational marijuana in the city of Southfield, and I have voted no on all the other recreational marijuana establishments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We can hear the no vote, we can hear...
The no votes were from Councilwoman Banks and Councilman Hicks. All right, we move on to the council portion of our meeting. Thank you, Mr. Deputy City Planner.
Thank you, sir.
We'll start with Councilwoman Hoag.
Thank you, Mr. President, I don't have anything.
I'm sorry?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Hicks?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. This coming Friday, April nineteenth, there will be a family night at the city of Southfield, city of Southfield, from six to eight PM. It will be in the Southfield Pavilion, there will be a five-dollar charge for residents and a ten-dollar charge for non-residents, and that's all I have, thank you.
All right, Councilman Cruz?
Yes, I would just like to say, for the general public, I know we just went through and approved this last item for another recreational place here in Southfield, and I did it kind of, I don't know, I was still kind of wavering, and, but what I wanted to say is, between that and between the liquor sales at the gas stations, both of which I really don't have a good feel for, I just wanna say, can we get a damn restaurant in Southfield? What the hell? Why don't we have any place to eat? I gotta go to West Bloomfield, I gotta go to Farmington Hills, I gotta go to Troy, all these other places. Why aren't we working as hard for something like that for our residents, as opposed to keep approving these things? It really makes me frustrated, and I apologize for my language, but it really does, and, you know, I'm just disgusted right now with, and I gotta include myself in it, because I'm part of this council, you know, that we're not doing more to get us some type of fine dining restaurants, places people can go, other than chicken and fish stations and fast-food restaurants. You can't live on that stuff, and not, well, you can live on it, but I'd like to go somewhere where I can sit down, and then the Baco up there, he came here and fooled us, and now he closed, said he closing it down for a cigar bar and stuff, or whatever. I just don't, I'm not feeling that, and so I just needed to say that today, because once I saw this agenda and looked at it, I was like, here we go again, it's another one, and it's gonna be another one. So where's the energy that's being put into, or the ability, I should say, to put into these things? Who's working on the restaurants for us? That's, that's all I have to say.
To clarify, Baco is closing and reopening a cigar bar, but they're also bringing back the restaurant. They're remodeling the entire...
The whole thing.
And they had to add a lot of filtration for the cigar bar, but yes.
Okay, well, Baco, I take that back, all right, then I will take you off the list, but, and we're glad to have you still, but nonetheless, you know, we could do a whole lot more. Merryweather's was like the only place we had to eat, that it was like a nice place to go. I had my parents' anniversary party at Merryweather's some years ago, but now, I don't know where I can go inside of Southfield and get a good meal.
I'll give you some places.
You'll give me some places?
I'll give you some places.
All right, then. All right then.
They're not Chinese.
Prime ten. I like them.
Anything else, sir?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Haynes?
Yes, I want to remind the public that this Wednesday is Jazz and Blues at the Library, starting at 6:30, and it's all about 8:30. If you're a member of the Friends, I think the charge is $5, non-members is $7. 100% of the proceeds go to support the library, which in turn, the Friends supports the library. Also, it's a good time to join the Friends if you're not a member, and we will be having some exciting news about the summer series coming up real soon. That's Jazz and Blues at the Library this Wednesday in the meeting room. I just want to speak a bit on the marijuana issue. In this business, when I come here in this seat, I can't always vote how I think, live, and feel. You have to make business decisions, and my vote yes was because this is a business and has to be treated like every other business that's here. These people follow the guidelines, they did what they were supposed to do, so we have to honor that. I could've voted no, and it would've been just a stance to say, because I don't support anything with marijuana, but I had to act accordingly to a business standpoint with this. And my no vote may have cast some, had it been a majority, some differences of things. So in saying that, my personal opinion sometimes does not go in line with what I have to do as a business decision. We are here to make business decisions. If I came here and I had a business, and I came before this council, and I got everything in order and did everything I was supposed to do according to the state, according to the city, and I get refused, that would be an issue for me as well. And like I said, when you don't support something, you don't like it, and you're a resident, there's one thing your feet can do. So we, but we, up here, we have to do what we have to do as far as a business standpoint, and that's what I was understanding and told, and that's what I follow. I don't follow somebody telling me anything or pushing me to do anything. This is a business, we have to make business decisions, and I'll stand by that.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
I just want to reach out to my veterans. There, the Elizabeth Dole Foundation offers financial help and also aid to the caregivers for veterans. So to get into, you can reach me here at City Hall, and I can provide additional information, but if you are a veteran or you are enrolled with the VA in Ann Arbor and/or in Detroit, ask your primary care doctor and/or your veteran service program director to give you info on the Elizabeth Dole Foundation caregiver policy. And they, the policy pretty much aids the individuals who are caregivers, because they are realizing that caregivers need just as much care and support as the veteran themselves who is being cared for. You need, you need time off, you need time to do your own shopping, but it's a very unique program that's being sponsored by the Elizabeth Dole Foundation. She's an ex-senator from North Carolina, and I think she married Bob Dole, who was a senator in World War II Veterans Act. That's it, sir.
Thank you. Just a couple other housekeeping and fun announcements. The Police Officers Association of Michigan actually selected one of Southfield's own Sergeant Ashmore as the Police Officer of the Year for 2024, and that is exciting. Congratulations to Sergeant Ashmore. Also, this month, on Sunday, April 28th, the city will be celebrating, without much fanfare, its 66th anniversary of incorporation as a municipality. So I thought that I'd share that as well. This coming Sunday, the 21st, Southfield Parks and Rec is having their Touch a Truck event that will take place here in the north parking lot, that's the parking lot between the City Hall and the library, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. It's a free event, there will be food trucks as well, and a bunch of trucks that you can go inside and look at, and it's a lot of fun. If you, if you missed it last year, you can come this year, it was a good event. There will also be food trucks if you get hungry, that will be, there will be a cost for the food trucks, that is not free. But it is a great event, police and fire will be there as well. I also wanted to, the Southfield Police Department, this will be during the month of May, will be holding a Coffee with a Cop at the Tim Hortons on 12 Mile Road near Evergreen on the Mondays, May 13th, 20th, and 27th, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. You can go to the city's website and talk to the police department for more, more information. Southfield Parks and Rec is also hosting a Earth Day fun presentation on Monday, April 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. behind the ice arena at the Civic Center Park. Again, it's a free event with the Friends of the Rouge for Earth Day, and there will be some educational as well as fun things for children. And last, but certainly not least, again, in May, on May 9th, Southfield Parks and Rec is hosting a Bike Safety Night from 5:30 to 7:30, again, in the north parking lot, where they will be giving out, Corvall will be there giving out helmets, there will be bike checks as well as other informational opportunities on bike riding safety. So I'm sure that we will make the announcements again on our meeting right before, but just to, so you could plan your schedule ahead of time. Other than that, have a good evening, and we'll turn it over to our mayor.
I have just two things to mention, and I'm surprised nobody on the council, usually beats me to it, but Household Waste Day is this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Rarsock Facility at 8 Mile near Evergreen. You enter on Maple Ridge, and it's a good time to get rid of hazardous materials and electronics that we don't want put in the regular garbage, as well as batteries. And also, they're doing simply recycling, the fabric recycling and shredding will be available this Saturday. And then next week, on the 25th and 26th of April, our partnership continues with Habitat for Humanity, we'll be doing their annual or semi-annual Rock the Block event. Roughly 12 to 14 homeowners will get assistance with the simple home repairs, all like outside, nothing inside the home, yard maintenance, fences, porches, gutters, that sort of thing. And we're very grateful for this continuing partnership with Habitat, as they bring in usually 50 volunteers, as well as corporate support that provides tools and materials. It will, the gathering point will be on Westland Street where the duplexes are being constructed, and that's west of Evergreen. Thank you.
Mr. Administrator?
I, I have no items this evening. Thank you.
Madam Attorney?
Good evening. I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you. Quickly, I'd like to just let our public know that 16-year-olds can register to vote in Michigan, as long as they're a U.S. citizen, not serving a prison sentence. And then, even though they can register at 16, they can vote at 18, but it's a proactive approach to get them engaged. The clerk's office does hire 16-year citizens or residents and up to vote elections, so it helps to engage them at a very young age, and with it being a presidential year, they're hearing all about it, and they might be more apt to register this year and become a habitual voter, which is what we want. They can contact the clerk's office at 248-796-5160 or 5150, as well as any other adults that may be interested in part-time seasonal worker for our two upcoming elections, August the 5th and November the 6th. I also want to say that precinct delegate elections are commencing this year, and they can file, not at our office, to run for a precinct delegate position, but at the county clerk's office. Precinct delegates are usually one of the first steps in becoming involved in the political process, or having your name on a ballot to serve in the political process. So the deadline to file is May the 7th at 4:00 p.m. So that would be all from me today. Thank you, or tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Planner?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Council, anything else to come before us? This meeting is adjourned.